Please join us for the pledge. Our pledge is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Are there any agenda deletions or changes? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, item number one. We have A, claims for six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. French at hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. B, minutes to approve regular meeting on ten fifteen nineteen, special meeting ten seventeen nineteen, and special meeting on ten twenty-five nineteen. C, approve removal from payroll for Jolynn Birmingham, site manager, nutrition, effective eleven one nineteen. D, approve job classification change for Zachary Bean from R M T one to E O one, secondary roads, effective ten twenty-eight nineteen. E, approve job classification change for Andrew Butler from E M T one to E O one, secondary roads, effective ten twenty-eight nineteen. F, approve request for the use of auditorium in the first floor hallway for Warren County Democratic Convention, three twenty-one of twenty-two. G, approve request for the use of auditorium for Indianola Dance Academy on twelve fourteen two thousand and nineteen. H, approve request for the use of auditorium, Warren County Polar Plunge, two twenty-eight of two thousand and twenty, and two twenty-nine two thousand and twenty. I, approve abatement of mobile home taxes pursuant to Iowa Code four thirty-five point two five on title nine one zero one one three six zero seven in the amount of seventy-five dollars plus all accrued interest. J, approve abatement of mobile home taxes pursuant to Iowa Code four three five point two five on title nine one zero one one three six zero eight in the amount of sixty-nine dollars plus all accrued interest. K, approve abatement of mobile home taxes pursuant to Iowa Code four three five point two five on title nine one zero one one three four five four in the amount of eighty-four dollars plus all accrued interest. L, approve abatement of mobile home taxes pursuant to Iowa Code four three five point two five on title nine one zero one one three four six one in the amount of fifty-four dollars plus all approved interest. M, approve abatement of mobile home taxes pursuant to Iowa Code four three five point two five on title nine one zero one one three four five zero in the amount of seventy-four dollars plus all approved interest. N, approve abatement of taxes pursuant to Iowa Code four two seven point one on Harpsola, nine two eight seven zero zero four zero eight two four, comma, nine two eight seven zero zero four zero eight four four in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Tracy.
Shaw.
Hi.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number two. It's not quite nine thirty-five. So, let's go on to item number three, consider mental health advocate request with possible action. Hello, Betsy.
Hi. Okay, just a reminder, this is following a change with advocates. They used to be under the direction of the courts, but the counties had to pay. So, a few years back they moved it, so it's all under the counties, and the counties are required to employ the mental health advocates. At that point in time, we decided to go with Madison County, who's our existing advocate. Our existing advocate had served Madison and Warren previously. So, Madison had to have agreed to employer. She is now no longer employed with Madison County, and so we're needing to reassign the mental health advocate for Warren County. I have coordinated with other counties within our region to assign Richie Bonbon. He is employed by Boone County. He currently serves Boone, Jefferson, Mercury County, and Jefferson, and Potters County. And so, we'd be looking to add Warren and Madison as well. So, we would just need a resolution to appoint him.
And if that's a resolution to appoint, the mental health advocate.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Thank you. Betsy, I have nine thirty-five, and we've taken a motion to open public hearing regarding revised zoning and subdivision ordinances with possible action.
I move we go to the public meeting.
Seven.
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Set here, then report to a proposed amendment to two thousand and nineteen Warren County Iowa revised zoning and subdivision ordinances. The amendment application is made by the Warren County zoning administrator. The proposed amendment in chapter forty-one, section forty-one oh two, A one district regulations, under one permit, principal permitted uses, add key communication towers constructed, operated, and maintained as part of the Warren County Emergency Services Communication Equipment and Systems. This subsection is repealed on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. So, this section would deal only with the emergency management, the nine-one-one towers that are needed for the county, and it would be repealed on December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. All other towers would still go in front of the board adjustment with a special use permit application, so.
Any questions for me? Okay, the time is yours. If anyone has any questions or concerns concerning this unit change, please approach the board now, state your name and your address.
I move we go back to regular session.
Seven.
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Okay. As it was proposed to us, I accept a motion to revise the zoning and subdivision ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Did you want to wait a second, please?
I managed to wait a second.
I second the revised motion to amend the Warren County zoning, revised zoning and subdivision ordinances as presented.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, item four, update on community services report. I bet you some.
Well, as I said earlier when I walked in, I don't give up here very often. And so, I thought it's good, nice to be able to give you guys an update on what our office is doing. So, I won't read the report to you, you guys have your packet. Just mostly is informational stuff. There are a few highlights that I'll hit, and if you guys have any questions, I can answer those as well. The first part was just a general systems update. I would just kind of for public record, remind people that Medicaid has been done, so we should see a reduction in the requests for utility assistance. That started October one for individuals elderly and individuals with disabilities, and then November first for everybody else. So, hopefully that'll see a reduction in our utility payments out. The other thing is we've seen a reduction in our denials for normal assistance. A lot of people are getting used to our guidelines. We've made some adjustments, and we're just helping more people, so. The other thing too is we're taking applications for outbreak in Christmas. It's a community organization that provides food for anybody who's during the holidays, and then gifts as well for individuals or families that have kids over eighteen. So, we take those applications and then we pass them on to the organization. So, that's really my general systems update. Change the same thing that you guys usually see. The other piece I have, just with mental health and disability services update, changing guys some information. We are excited. The construction is done, the community drop-in center for individuals who have a lived mental health experience, whether they're currently experiencing issues or have in the past, that they have that available to them now. It's, but the soft opening, they're still waiting for all the furniture to come in to get it completely furnished, but it is open. It's, I think I put the address in here, yep, two ten West Ashland. So, it's just off the square just left of there, so there used to be a church there in that location. So, we're really excited. It's a new service, it's never been offered in Warren County for individuals with mental health concerns. So, excited for them to have an opportunity of somewhere to go and somewhere to get peer support. Of course, there will be a lot of individuals who are coming out of the service coordination. Down there, we are averaging about sixteen applications, so that's sixteen new requests for funding coming in per home. Individuals through our two service coordinators that we have employed by Warren County. So, I also put mobile crisis stats in there because I still think that's such a new value in the service that I always like to include. The other piece that I really want to hit on is just the legislative impacts. I know we've talked before about the constraints that we had and kind of the roller coaster was going to put Warren County on for property tax levy. We did get some of that resolved, so that is good news. The negative of that is we continue to get legislative mandates onto the regions without additional state funding coming in. So, that will mean that we will see a study increase with the mental health levy most likely. So, I put some financial forecasting in there for you guys to review, just so that you can kind of see what we're looking at from the regional perspective is how we're going to, as we spend down our fund balance, we're going to have to begin levying more property tax dollars. So, that's in there. So, I think, so some of those mandates, I guess I will just say is the additional crisis and complex needs services. So, we're still working as a region to build some of those services. And then the new one, the latest one, was the Children's Behavioral Health System. So, that legislatively was given to the regions, and with no funding at this point. So, there's been discussion about next legislative session, maybe some funding will go along with it, but we're still waiting to see, see what exactly that's going to look like. Then, the last thing I guess I just wanted to provide an update on was Genesis Development. I'm not sure if you guys have heard, but Genesis Development did cease providing services throughout all of their sites. So, I'm just hearing a little bit on all of their sites. I believe Warren County is their second largest site, or was. Imagine the Possibilities is a provider based out of Kokoda, and they have basically assumed all Genesis Development's services. So, the good news is, is most of the staff stayed on. So, the clients and individuals that are being served really shouldn't have seen a lot of impact by the transition, but it is an impact. It impacts employer, it's impacting the employer, it's also impacting the employees that are employed by, or were employed by Genesis Development and now moving over to Imagine the Possibilities. So, the other thing to the impacts Warren County specifically with that transition is the Landry facility. That, they is maintaining Genesis Development at this time. I believe they're looking to sell that asset off, but it will look a little different. So, just kind of want to give you guys a heads up because I know Terry used to come and kind of give an update on Genesis Development, so I wanted to make sure you guys had that information. Okay, I tried to keep it short and sweet. So, later, do you have any questions for me? Please, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five is consider speed limit change on S twenty-three highway with possible action.
Thank you, this is to further extend the forty-five mile par speed zone north of Lacona. There's some residential development that this will accommodate on that paved highway, so we feel this reduction in speed is appropriate. It's a pretty minor shift, it's only about a few hundred feet or so to the north, so something we can accommodate. So, our department recommends approval of this speed zone change.
I take a motion to approve the speed limit change on S twenty-three highway.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Item six is consider conversion of point six eight miles on One Hundredth Avenue from a level C to a level B with possible action.
So, this is to convert a level C gated off-road from a couple hundred feet south of the Des Moines city limits down to the North River. The only change I have on the agenda item is it should read approximately one point four miles. So, if you do set a motion, it'll be that distance, and that'll get it from, you know, those approximate city limits down to the North River. I've spoken with the Heritage Foundation, D N R, and our Conservation Department, and they seem to be in support of this as well. It's mainly to get public access back to those areas, being that it's, even though it's level C, it's a public road, and people might want to enjoy some of those natural resources or possibly go catfishing in the North River. So, we recommend converting it back to level B to allow for those type of activities. And you have anything further, feel free, but.
Sure, yeah.
This is Dr. Gosling with the D N R.
Hi, yeah, I just want to say I'm definitely in favor of this. We have three hundred and fifty acres of public land there that we don't really have access to, so this will leave a problem and provide access for the public to use those areas. So, we're definitely in favor of this change.
All right, thank you. I accept a motion to consider conversion of one point four mile on One Hundredth Avenue from a level C to a level B.
So moved.
Second, if I have a question.
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes, please. Has any thought or consideration, I'm supportive of it as well, but has any thought or consideration been given to, you know, some sort of trail, like a trail cam or something? I mean, I know in the last two weeks, one of our deputies caught two individuals dumping sort of on the northern part of the county. It's my understanding that people are posting Craigslist sites saying, hey, we'll take your appliances for fifty bucks, we'll cover the dump fees. Well, they're not covering any, I mean, they're covering it right in their pocket, and then they bring it to northern Warren County. There's some rural aspect of Warren County that we have our conversations where we determine who picks it up and what we do about it. So, I'm really supportive of it. I just want to make sure that there's some patrol or some sort of mechanism to dissuade people or other folks from using it as a dump site.
Exactly, you know, that's a concern on multiple public areas, we have that issue. So, for Warren County, we have two conservation officers that patrol the area. So, this opening, I mean, obviously they can patrol that, and they do have technology equipped cameras, you know, to take pictures, trail cams, other cams. It becomes a problem, and it's something we've dealt with in other public areas. And, yeah, you know, we try to enforce that best we can. You know, you can't stop everything, but definitely it's, yeah, it's an issue we deal with everywhere. But, you know, I guess I would hate to limit the public access, you know, think there might be an issue. And, you know, I'm sure there will be at some point, but we'll definitely, you know, have the conservation officers patrol that, keep an eye on it, and then if there's an issue, you know, put up cameras. And we've been successful catching people like that in the past, so, you know, it's definitely a thing we need to let and work hard to.
Thank you, I appreciate the response, and I, you know, I think as we move into next year or as things sort of settle down here a little bit in the county, that's one of the areas where I really think we need to look at our regulations and stiffen penalties as much as possible and start making some examples of people because they're not all getting it. And it's really frustrating, and I'm very supportive of this. I think more public ground is a nice thing, so.
Okay, Tracy.
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
All right, item seven, consider silica exposure control policy with possible action.
So, this is a policy specific to the Secondary Roads Department in regards to silica exposure. In recent years, OSHA's really kind of dialed in on this particular topic. We've worked with Argent, Maggie with Argent's has been a really good deal with, and helped us draft up this silica exposure control program, basically to minimize or avoid exposure to silica dust. When you actually see the regulations, you know, they give you the examples of it's, you know, a couple particles in a full football stadium. So, it's, the limits are really stringent, and it's something, you know, from a safety standpoint that we take seriously, and we'll have to modify equipment if needed to control dust.
Okay, I would accept a motion to accept the silica exposure control policy.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Tracy.
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, consider approval of F Y nineteen cash annual financial report with possible action.
Each year, we're required to file a cash financial report and have it published in the paper prior to December one of each year. The Department of Management actually, we did the forms this year, so I've been waiting for them to get those forms finished. They did finally release them, so I have those documents in your packet. We've already been over the numbers far as departmental-wise when we went over the fiscal year end in July. The Department of Management breaks it down by those service areas as opposed to departmentally. So, when we look at the financial report, we know that our revenues came in high because of that increased the interest. There's about two hundred and twenty-five thousand increase to general fund interest. And our expenditures are, physical health and social services came in under budget. That was primarily in D C A T nutrition and public health. Those expenditures came in under. The other large that came in under was the administrative, the Board of Supervisors Office, the treasurer, maintenance, general services, we're all able to come in under budget would help with that number. We already talked about, if you look at the end of your financial resources, where you find those fund balances, our general fund is our primary operating. And as we talked about at the end in July, unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was about thirty-one percent ratio expenditures to fund balance. So, that's just a different snapshot of what the budget looked like. We look at it generally departmentally, this looks at a little different. Our only roads and transportation, we did exceed by twenty thousand dollars in that service area. So, I'll implement doing some additional monthly reports to try and help prevent that from happening, so. If you have any other questions about the financial report, otherwise this, if you approve it, then we'll publish it by the end of the year. The gap financial report is that accrual-based financial report. It will come after the state audit is completed and has finished the accruals.
I move we accept a motion to accept one annual financial report.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Item nine, consider consent for Verizon modification to telecommunications structure located on Warren County Administrative Building with possible action.
We have a building on leased land. Verizon has a tower on top of this administrative building. I had brought this to the board previously. Supervisor McIntyre requested I get an independent study done to make sure that the chimney was able to withstand the modifications that Verizon was proposing. I did hire Vint Strand Kim to do a report, and it is, that is included in your packet. It is their opinion that the analysis of the existing steel support structure anchors is adequate. No additional analysis is needed. They were comfortable with the modifications to be made. So, I ask now that you approve Verizon's request. Acknowledged, received the request for the landlord approval and consent to the site modifications at the above referenced site. Consent to the proposed modifications as outlined in the attached construction drawings would be your, what I'm seeking approval for, so that Verizon can move forward.
But how much did they charge you?
I do not have an invoice from them yet. They quoted me at around a thousand dollars that I will request from Verizon.
I accept a motion for Verizon to approve the Verizon modification to the telecommunications structure located on Warren County Administrative Building.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Okay, item ten, consider retention to release to Vanderpool Construction Incorporated to be paid after thirty-one days with possible action.
This is for the courthouse. Vanderpool had the bid for the storm sewer relocation. They've completed, we did the completion certificate with them. This is to release the retainage, which is ten thousand eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents. This would be the last of the contractors we have out there to release. So, this would, after thirty-one days, they're allowed to file lead. So, we hold the funds for, until the thirty-first day, and then we release them to Vanderpool.
I move that we reduce to ten thousand thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
Retain it, yeah.
Retainage to Vanderpool Construction, Inc.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Consider, item eleven, consider M U with Iowa Department of Corrections regarding the reaching a holding of parole officers with possible action.
The sheriff submitted this, this is the same policy that they have been doing with parolees. However, this is just puts it in writing. This would, no change financially to how we're holding parolees. It's just a written version of what the policy is, and that we didn't have a written version in place.
I accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Shaw.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Okay, item twelve, supervisor to report, supervisor Duco.
All right, I have to modify it a little bit, so I'll just give you the view of a thousand feet up. Per meeting, special meeting regarding conservation and a few other issues that would wellness. Attended a city-state banquet in Cunningham, attended a Norwalk candidate forum, spoke at the Indianola Rotary, spoke at the Norwalk Rotary this morning. Was at Simpson College eight days ago. Multiple communications with constituents. Spent some time, as discussed earlier, with a dumping issue that was recent, our county recently apprehended two individuals that were doing just that, and I'll be interested to see how that ends up. A lot of emails, a lot of phone calls. Oh, I'll end with this. Big hat tip to the Norwalk football team. Last Friday, they had a playoff game, and in that playoff game, they had a slow start. They were down twenty-one zero, they ended up the game, ended the game at forty-two twenty-eight, and their quarterback, Zach Markert, is, I don't know if it's official yet, but it should be because his stats are unreal. It's like a video games stat line. I think he's going to be the C C C I athlete of the week, so cheers to them. They've got another game coming up on Friday.
Thank you. Supervisor.
Shaw.
Maybe we could send them to advertising to the Norwalk school. Let's see, I had a water trails meeting, which is a very interesting thing. I've been on for a month or two, City of Indianola, Wildwood Hills, Keep Iowa Beautiful, and as Supervisor Aaron said, numerous phone calls.
Thank you. Okay, my activities since our last regular board meeting. I've included my sack leadership school committee meeting, Agent Resources Board of Director, where Dr. Shaw was introduced. He is a leader in the field of memory loss. His clinic has turned their broad-ons clinic into one of the best in the nation. The clinic's phone number is five one five two eight two five seven zero zero. We had an employee review, and an ask-me grievance meeting, the judicial board of directors meeting, met with Jolynn Birmingham, who was, she's now retired, within a week of meeting her, an advocate for elderly, and from the explanation I received, the coordinator for the Mills an advocate for elderly and from the explanation I received, the coordinator for the mill sites, including purchases, scheduling, and promotion of mill sites. I wish I knew this position existed years ago. She was not utilized in the manner that she could have been for Warren County Congregate Meals. Item seven on my list here is Impact Board Meeting. Impact has coordinated with Polk County to set up Polk County Disaster Philanthropy Group, which is for anyone who wants to donate money for a disaster, since there are not clear ways of doing so in the past. So included in the board meeting at Impact was li- heat has started October first. Applications for heating assistance are available. Finally attended the Warren County Housing Authority Board Meeting, which was not held for the three months I've been trying to observe that those meetings. Sir, women of Impact will present at the next meeting to discuss cooperation in meeting clients' needs in Warren County housing. Warren County October Safety Meeting, Special Board Meeting of the Supervisors, met on the twenty-fifth of October, met with outside legal counsel for possible pending litigation, attended New Virginia Lacona and Spring Hill City Councils. Spring Hill has moved their meeting dates to the second Tuesday of the month at six thirty. And also numerous phone calls, including some dumping issues. Okay, moving on to item thirteen, which is public input. Let me hear comments for three minutes per individual. The board will not take any action on the comments, do the requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in the future. No public input will be allowed for any of today's item agenda.
Well, I was, I've had a question back about these B roads and the maintenance, and I still have great concerns in our farmers also. Eisenhower still hasn't been bladed, and I requested in Palmar Township all roads be, B roads be bladed. This is very important to farmers. They have enough to fight with, with getting crops in and crops out. Back when B roads were established, back when, it was the policy of this county that they would be bladed no less than twice a year, no less. We have roads that have not been bladed all year. It is not only the factor of trying to get in to get crops out, it's also a factor of trying to get emergency equipment in if there is an accident or there is a need for it. There is, they were not to be abandoned. They were to be maintained, and it appears that they're becoming more abandoned all the time. The farmers need these roads, and I understand the kids mub them. So do the farmers getting in and out with tractors. It's just a matter of seeing to it that they're done. I, they're a hit and a miss. Some of them are bladed, some of them aren't. So I don't know if there is misunderstanding of policy, if there is a lack of communication between the engineer's desk and the blade operator, but it is something that is a concern, and it is, there's pastures. Eisenhower alone, there's only one access back into part of that. It hasn't been bladed all year. Hundred and Eightieth, when I complained, David told me that I had to file a complaint to get this done, and I did. I don't see why we have to file a complaint. This is in the road system, and I would like to have it taken care of without people having to complain, so. That is a concern that I have, and it's a concern for many of the farmers in my area. I don't have a B road, but I do have neighbors that do have.
Is that specifically Hundred Eightieth Avenue?
Hundred and Eightieth, I filed a complaint and they were on it, David, yes, but Eisenhower hasn't been gone over. It's a hit and miss, and I'm assuming that it is different blade operators, and whatever, wherever the miscommunication is with you and your blade operators probably need to kind of have a review of that.
Thank you. So what you mentioned is correct. We do ask that people report things to our office so it can get documented in the system, which is what we use. It's GovQway, we're all familiar with it. That provides a written record for us to track citizen service requests in the county. Without that, we don't have that written record, and it's the one place we use to document this information, and we've worked hard to get there. I personally checked Eisenhower, but seeing the bigger picture, there are just some other roads that need to get hit first. And I also drove down all of Hundred Eightieth yesterday in Rural Drive, from the S twenty-three patching project to the bridge replacement project. We have gone to check that road, and I got through it with no issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Further input? Seeing and hearing now, moving on to item fourteen. The next meeting date is November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and that's at six P M., and I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.